Okay, so I was wondering about that.
I mean, we don't know because we don't complete our training, but.
Oh, you're not talking about the, okay.
You're talking about the, um, something like twelve, big twelve park.
Oh, yeah, that was, no, that was.
I mean, I'd love to make their one collection of million dollars, but.
Donation. I was like, oh, that sounds great.
Like, yeah, I'll show up and take your four hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Great, let's do it. It's like, just give us the city's bank account number to wire.
It's usually how you get grants, right? Someone emails you and tells you.
You didn't even try for this, or we're just gonna.
We got a pot of money from you.
Well, I'm just wondering, like, where everyone is and why they're not just.
All right, here we go. This is our city council regular meeting. It's in Mon County Commission Chambers, two forty-three High Street, Tuesday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, and it is ten after seven. We're calling the meeting to order and asking the clerk if she please call the roll.
Yes. Deputy Mayor Bouganum? Bill Kuege?
Here.
Wheezy Michael?
Here.
Danielle Trumbull?
Here.
Dave Harshbarger?
Here.
Brian Butcher?
Here.
Mayor Celine?
Here.
Our stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now we have approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes this evening. We have December fifth, twenty twenty-three special meeting minutes, December fifth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting minutes. Usually approve our minutes by acclamation. Is there everybody good with the minutes? All right, thank you. Correspondence. We don't show any correspondence this evening. Is there, does anyone have any correspondence that you wanted to mention? And now we're on to public hearing. Public hearing is for an ordinance amending Article thirteen oh one of the Morgantown Planning and Zoning Code pertaining to the Comprehensive Plan for the Physical Development of the City of Morgantown, to lead reference, to delete references to the twenty thirteen Comprehensive Plan and to adopt the twenty twenty-three Comprehensive Plan, Morgantown, twenty thirty-three. So we're going to open this public hearing. This is public hearing regarding this item and only this item. If there's anyone wishing to speak, this is your moment. See the crowds out there. All right, we're going to close this public hearing. Now we're going to move on to unfinished business, which is consideration of approval of second reading of an ordinance amending Article thirteen oh one of the Morgantown Planning and Zoning Code pertaining to the Comprehensive Plan for the Physical Development of the City of Morgantown, delete, to delete references to the twenty thirteen Comprehensive Plan and to adopt the twenty twenty-three Comprehensive Plan, Morgantown, twenty thirty-three. The first reading was ten, three, twenty twenty-three. And what is council's pleasure on this as far as a motion, and then we can have discussion if anyone has any. Motion? Is there second?
Second.
Thank you. So here we are. This has gone through a great big long process. This is the final reading. Is there anything that anyone wanted to ask questions of our city attorney or our city manager?
We had moved to amend the Comprehensive Plan to include Richwood as a study area. Has that been added? I haven't seen an updated draft since then. I'm just checking to ensure.
Yeah, I saw it added in the most recent update. That was.
Okay.
That's correct. Those amendments that the city council made on first reading were added as tables to the Comprehensive Plan as well. And the roadside hardware, the consultant who worked with the Planning Commission and Steering Committee represented by Ron Sessomson and Eden Merrick are here as well, if council has questions of them.
Would you be willing to just go over what was amended and changed for the public knowledge in the most recent update? There wasn't too many, right?
It's on page, the, um, we made some amendments. It's on page eight of mine, page one of one of the memorandum.
Sure.
From Ricky.
Yeah, so first Comprehensive Plan is the, the governing body's planning process. It's required to guide your zoning decisions. Has to be done at maximum ten-year intervals. So this, this community planning process and this document will guide how you direct land use in the, the community for the next ten years or so. And as such, a very large document. After presentation to Planning Commission and some public hearings, council requested some changes to that document. There were elements added to the environment, environment element chapter, which is page one hundred sixteen of the Comprehensive Plan, referencing collaboration with the Tree Board and stakeholders to establish a tree canopy goal and collaboration with stakeholders to address policy issues. Goals and implementation, implementation strategies set forth in the Climate Action Plan. There was a corrected reference to the airport in the implementation chapter, and Richwood Avenue was added as what was termed a focus area in the Land Management Plan. That's the reference to a, a study for changes in future development that Councilor Trumbull was discussing.
Does anyone have any other questions?
No, thanks for the update.
Thanks, Frank.
All right. If the clerk would please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Bouganum?
Yes.
Bill Kuege?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. Passes unanimously. We now have a new Comprehensive Plan in City Morgantown. It's a good day, a lot of work. Thank you, city staff, and all of the citizens that worked on it, which is considerable. Now we are onto boards and commissions. We have some nominations.
To the Tree Board?
I'll second.
Thank you. By acclamation. All right. Do we have any others?
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Dr. Samuel Workman to the Morgantown Utility Board.
And I'll second that also.
Thank you. By acclamation. Put him on board. All right. Do we have any others? I think we had one for the transit, transit board. I don't know who it was. We're going to do Jonathan Cook.
Second.
Thank you.
Sounds like you made a nomination.
I certainly did. That's wonderful. All right. So by acclamation?
Yep, yes.
Okay. Did we have any others?
I don't think so.
I don't think.
I don't think so either. All right, good.
She's looking around accusatorily, like, we're all supposed to be, I'm like, I don't know, did we?
No, just if somebody had it in a, had it in a notebook. All right, so now we are to the public portion. So we're going to have a public portion, which shall be subject to the rules established by council and adopted by resolution. We're going to open this public portion. Is there anyone on the list? All right. Everyone's enjoying their holiday festivities. Then we're going to close this public portion, and we're going to move on to, um, new business, consideration of approval of the first reading of an ordinance authorizing a standard airline agreement and lease with Southern Airways Express LLC. And I believe we have our, our board director here.
Good evening, councilors. So this ordinance is for an agreement with Southern Airways. The agreement actually, the previous agreement expired in twenty twenty, so we've been month to month ever since. We were working on an agreement a couple of years ago, and the gentleman with Southern that was doing it wound up with, with cancer. He was fighting that, so we postponed working on it. And then he eventually, unfortunately, lost his life. So his replacement came on beginning of this year, and we finally got an agreement put together. If you notice, the agreement is only for a year with the ability to extend month to month, dependent upon DOT's award next year for EAS contract. So this coming fall of twenty-four, DOT will rebid our EAS contract, and whoever that carrier is that's chosen, if it's Southern again, their contract will continue. If a different carrier is chosen, we'll enter into a new agreement at that point. And, yep, and this agreement basically is for the use of their, their office space and operating space at the airport, and it also includes what their landing fee rate is. So it's a very basic contract.
Move to approve?
Motion, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And then who has some questions? Well, Southern Airways sure came in here with spiffy outfits and colors and a commitment to being in Morgantown, and they have stayed.
They have. They have filled that commitment. I think they're interested in keeping that commitment here, but they are, they are struggling as a carrier with the crew shortage and also aircraft part shortage. It's hitting them very, very hard. So our service isn't where it was, say, a little over a year ago, but they are working very diligently to, to bring it back to where we were.
Keep us surprised of our, of our progress, and we appreciate their continued service.
Yeah, well, thank you.
They have, they have continued where others have fallen away, so that's very, very appreciated, kind of.
And they are very supportive of our community. Their chief communications officer actually sits on some boards in our town.
Yes.
Even though he's from Boston, he comes back to Morgantown and sits on a couple of boards here to, to help with tourism primarily.
For instance, the Morgantown Area Partnership and which other the.
The CVB.
The CVB.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, visit Mount near country.
So thank him, thank him from us.
So they, and because of that, they tend to do a little more marketing here than they do in a lot of other cities that they fly into, so we're thankful for that as well.
Whatever we can do to step up the marketing.
Exactly.
Even higher.
Exactly.
Right. Anything else? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The city manager's report.
I have two, two items. One is express appreciation to all of you who attended the employee lunch last week. It was great. And the venue was great, and express great appreciation to those members of our staff who sat on that committee and planned it out, and the food was great, the, and, and.
Decorations.
And decorations were great, and it was set up in such a way that, it was such a great thing to watch employees just sit around and, and. And it was set up in such a way that, it was such a great thing to watch employees just sit around and, and visit, you know? In an informal manner, and I, I thought that was great. So, and thank you all. I, I, I can't tell you how important that is to our, our employees. Your support. And, and nothing shows it more than when you, when you make, make the effort to be there, and so, thank you. Also, just wanted to wish you a Merry Christmas. Hope it's, it's wonderful with, with your families and that we're ready for, to hit the ground running in January because there's a lot to do. We were, we had some meetings today with Russ Rogerson and his staff. And there's a lot, a lot of things to work on this year. We're excited about it, but there's a lot of work to do. So enjoy the holidays and come out the lull before the storm. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Do we need to vote on the Southern Airways contract?
That would be really good.
Move to approve?
Second.
Yeah, I think we already did that.
Okay, good.
Now we need to do the part where we call the roll. So please, please pull me up for that. I'm busy getting through my agenda without votes. It doesn't work. All right.
Deputy Mayor Bouganum?
Yes.
Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Passes unanimously, yes.
I can do mine again.
I don't think we need a reprise, but really appreciate the thoughtful comments. Now we're on to the city clerk.
Yes, I'd like to echo what the city manager said about our, our employee Christmas meal. It was, it was really nice, so thanks for everyone who worked really hard. You can tell that a lot of work went into decorating that place and it was really nice, so thank you, city manager, for allowing us to, to do that. A couple of weeks ago, I talked about the Police Civil Service Commission who would be administering the promotional exam for captain. And so I wanted to share that on December thirteenth, we, the commission did hold the, the exam. And after the exam, Chad Reyes will be our new captain. There is a review period and that ends on December twenty-sixth. So once that review period is over and we have some successful medical exams, then Chad Reyes will be our new captain. So congratulations to him and everyone else that took the exam. We appreciate all the hard work that they do. And then I want to say to everyone, have a safe and happy holidays. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. City attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks to staff consultants, everyone, volunteers who worked on the comprehensive plan and the council for considering that, looking at changes and adopting. Will be working with development services staff and I'm sure others in the planning commission to, to implement that and look at both administrative and council-initiated or citizen-initiated zoning changes to address those goals. It looks like, you know, a, a great plan and a good thing for the community. So looking forward to working on that. And also, happy holidays to all of you. Hope you get a, a nice break in a little time away. That's all I have.
Thank you. A report, a report from city council members, and let's start with our deputy mayor.
Let me start by expressing my gratitude for the new signs about dogs being on leashes. I really appreciate it. To Assistant City Manager Azraeli for helping with that in Bo Park. I already saw them hanging up. And I would like to express that everyone please be careful with it getting colder and the snow on the wet roads yesterday. Especially when the snow came out of nowhere like it did. Outside of that, I really don't have too much to report. I did appreciate the Human Rights Commission presentation and the awards that were given at the Mon, is it Mon Arts? At the MAC, thank you, at the MAC. And outside of that, yeah, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you.
I'd hate to start it off again, but again, mixed. I'm wondering what we need to do with Republic. Or is there some reason that they can't close the lid when, I mean, is it mechanically impossible? When they dump this thing, close the lid on the can so that it doesn't get snowed on or rained into and all that? Again, it's...
Maybe we need a buzzer system where it just flashes out when the lid's not closed.
Be like a spring system.
I think there's some element of it that is, that almost is how they track where they left off. Sometimes whenever they have to go back and empty at the transfer station and come back.
I think it would be a little less irritating to me if I had some sort of understanding of why they didn't close it.
Would you confirm that?
Just...
That complaint has been registered a couple of times now recently and I have not received an answer back from Carol, but she, I know she's following up on that. I'll let you know as soon as I hear.
And I hate to be, you know, the nag, but on the other hand, we put up with the oversized cans, we wheel them to the curb, you know? For a logical reason, if you have a logical reason, you know, for the oversized cans, the mechanical picking them up and all the rest of it, you could dislike the idea but go along with it because, you know, there's some, some reasoning behind it. Closing the lid, that just seems to be courtesy. And I think they, I think the community deserves that courtesy.
But I like, I like framing it that way. You know, why, if there's a logical reason why.
Well, thank you.
It still is courtesy.
Appreciate that support. Other than that, thank you all for what has been a good year of passing. I wish you all the best for this upcoming holiday. And I look forward to what we can work together on in this upcoming new year, so thank you again. Best of luck, best of health.
I forgot this is the last meeting of the year. What's my bad? Happy New Year, that's where I'm reporting.
All right.
I only had one announcement for the third ward. And the Wilds Hill Community Center will be closed down December twenty-third through the first of January. The same with the Eureka Cafe. And they'll both be opening January the third reopening for the holidays. So everybody have a nice holiday and bless New Years, and that's all I have for today.
Nice.
I too will try to keep it short. I will just say that the warming shelter run by the Bartlett House at Hazel's House of Hope is open and operational. Under forty degrees, it has been opened. They currently have not had to use the additional fifteen-bed expansion in the sobering center space that, that they were granted. She has had beds available either in their normal twenty-eight-bed triad shelter or in their dozen extra beds that they added in their own space every day. Those have yet to fill up, so, but she assures us that she is ready to go with staffing and security and all of the, the necessary items for that additional space. So, yeah, just spread the word that it is open. I was also happy to attend the Human Rights Commission award ceremony. It was nice that they had that on a day where council could attend and most of us took advantage of that. I, I'm sorry that you all took a group photo right after. I had to leave for another obligation. It looked like I wasn't there, but I was. I also, Joe waited on me to leave. He was sitting next to me. I was also very happy to attend the employee luncheon. We don't need to go over how great the food and decoration and everything was. Again, just thanks to everyone who had a hand in that. Yeah, other than that?
The museum.
Oh, yeah, I did. Councillor Michael and I attended the holiday event at the Morgantown History Museum. We got to chat with the new museum director for a bit and our picture with Santa, a couple of different versions of Santa. It was, it was a great event. If you haven't been to the museum lately or at all, as I've found out, even a lot of city staff said, where's the museum? It's definitely worth a stop. The new director has been moving things around and doing a lot of great things. So definitely stop in and say hello to him and see what the museum is about. It's in the basement of the MAC. Just go around the corner from the main MAC entrance to the right. And it is, it is on the side street. Is that Kirk Street? Yeah. Other than that, happy holidays and happy New Year. Again, I will miss our first meeting of January, I believe, but I look forward to everything we get done in the New Year, especially now that the comp plan has been given final approval.
Moving forward.
Moving forward. And the Mon River Trail Conservancy received an early Christmas gift this past week with a forty thousand dollar grant from the Hazel Ruby McQuain Charitable Trust Foundation. And that will be used once weather permits in the spring to resurface drain ditch and reestablish a ten-foot width of three miles outside of the Star City limits going towards Point Marion. And so that will be three, three new miles once it's finished in terms of maintenance to the, to the rail trail. And there's some other things, but I, I really don't have enough info to give an update on, so I won't try to. And just wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and we'll see you beginning of the New Year.
Deal.
Great. Yeah, so Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everybody. I appreciate this year and everybody that's been on this council and every, everything we've accomplished this year. I wanted to go over quickly, I had a few questions about, because we had like a little, I guess, hiccup in recycling, so we'll talk about trash again, in recycling this week. And there was a lot of questions that different people had. And there was also this comment that was made by a few people that Montague County doesn't do recycling and that it all goes to the same dump and that it's a scam, essentially. So I asked a question about that, just for clarification. And I got clarification from Tom Berry at Berry, maybe, at Republic. And he sent me a very detailed email and I told him I would let people know once I had it, basically how they do recycling. So I'll try to be as brief as I can with what he said. But he's, he told us that recycling in Morgantown is brought to a transfer station at the industrial park. From there, it gets loaded onto semi-trucks daily and shipped to a material handling facility in Connelsville, PA. That, uh, the, uh, semi-trucks that load that trash are very similar to the, well, that load that recycling are very similar to the ones that load the trash, but the ones that load the trash go to a dump in Wheeling, West Virginia. In Connelsville, it's then separated and they do all the cool recycling things that they do. He also then told me about the kind of strict guidelines that they have to go through for the mixing of trash or recycling, which is called, I guess, in their industry co-mingling. And there's like, he was saying, the consequences of violating this, basically an absolute of, of the separation of the two materials is so severe that at so many levels, that the instances of actual violations are very uncommon and drivers are more likely to let containers sit rather than take the chance to cut corners and co-mingle. So that could also explain for some people why maybe the recycling doesn't get picked up if you put trash in there, then that'd be why.
And I see that all the time on the streets.
Yeah. So, so that could be a, a reason why. It says that they will immedi, like drivers, whenever they see that maybe trash might be in there or someone has frequently used a recycling can for trash, that they'll mark those on their route, they'll take pictures of them. The trash truck driver is then instructed to go pick that up if it's co-mingled with recycling just because they get in so much trouble for co-mingling them. That's all to say, recycling is definitely happening in Mon County. And it's, you know, like I said, a very detailed way in which they go about doing this. My recycling does, does get picked up. I know we had, you know, a, a, a new driver that was on the route, I guess, last week and it did not get picked up. It was expressed that like, it is a little frustrating for citizens to have to like self-report that. And I get that. You know, maybe there's something we can do to maybe work with Republic to have like a clear understanding of when things get missed. Maybe there's more of a like technological implementation that we could have that like maybe goes with GPS so that they know exactly when things have been missed and be more efficient about it. But, you know, I think that that's like an improvement that we could maybe like talk to them about and work with about. It sounds like Carol, because I sent this to Carol because I wasn't sure who to contact. And it sounds like she's having intentional meetings about those pretty often with Republic and making sure that she's on top of it as usual. So, yeah, appreciate all that and all that information that I got sent over and, and was happy to share. The last thing I wanted to share was, and, and I put this out on social media too, but I just wanted to say, my son, who's six, recently had to go in for, you know, fairly invasive surgery at, at the Children's Hospital. And it was just like honestly, an incredible experience at, at Ruby Memorial. Like the second we got off the elevator, the two people that were like welcoming, welcoming us there were like so happy to see us and so friendly. They gave Quinn like two toys and had him write a letter to Santa when he was there. Everybody that we interacted with was just like so good about knowing how to control, like, not control, but like make sure that Quinn was like distracted and wasn't, because he was scared. We were all very scared. And, and like the, the empathy and the level of care that they had for my child was, I cannot say how much I appreciate how they, how we were treated when we were there and, and his recovery and everything else. It was, it made that experience that was really terrifying like a hundred times better than it could have gone, right? You can imagine them just kind of saying, you know, being very cold and calculated about it. And they really took his well-being into, in, into account. And when he wrote that letter, we just yesterday got a letter back from Santa that was sent to him, which was like just really special for him to see, and he was like so excited and stuff like that. So I just want to express my appreciation for Ruby Memorial Hospital System and, and taking care of my, my child. And that will conclude my report. Thank you very much.
Nice, thank you. I just wanted to express my appreciation for all of our staff and hardworking people in every department and every, at the helm of every activity that the city accomplishes. Appreciate the proactive and practical way that my fellow council members handle their day-to-day activities in their neighborhoods and business districts and just, I always want to say, relentlessly moving forward. So that is what we are doing into the next year. We are relentless. We are moving forward. There's always things that are gonna get in our way, but the more community oriented we are, the more business oriented we are, the more that we are improving and growing our city will be to the benefit of our citizens. And appreciate all of the little things that people do and the big things that people do and just focusing on having a, having a can-do attitude and working with our community to make it better. And that was a great employee lunch. And I love all of the notes about the different activities that have... And I love all of the notes about the different activities that have been going on. And I really appreciate it when council members mention something like what Brian Butcher mentioned this evening and if you would forward that to all of us. We could become more educated, but I do know that there are new, new employee on the route and they tried retraining and working with that particular employee and then they pulled a different person to retrain that employee, so they're just working really hard and I think it is all GIS or it, it is all pinpointed, but somehow with our crazy streets and topography and so on. Although Suncrest is pretty flat on the norm for around here, which is the area that was missed the most. But I think they're just learning their routes, so anyway, appreciate it and let's move on with the rest of our year and our, end of our evening. So is there someone who is willing to read us into executive session?
Pursuant to West Virginia State Code Section six nine A, four B twelve, to discuss matters protected by attorney-client privilege.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, thank you. All right.